I don't know. Well, not mine. Not mine.
Is this, is this not where we're here?
No.
Oh, that's our other... Nope, I did not. Thank you, sir.
Haven't had the flu yet? I've had every flu shot, none of them except for the new strains that are in.
I guess they don't have any.
You see, you haven't had the flu?
Oh, no, I've had them every year.
But you haven't had the flu?
No.
Because I have a surgical mask on.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I have a lung transplant. So I was suppressed.
I'm 18% blind. I can't reach capacity, going with two smokers. I feel for you.
Okay, well, yes.
I get a cold, it's an acumenic injury to the neck.
That's a... So, you know, people start hacking and coughing around me, I...
Well, you ain't good.
Covering up.
Has anybody heard from Willie?
He heard from Willie? Are we Willie-less tonight? Okay. We're without a Willie.
Okay. And is the name of the Wi-Fi council chambers? I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a chance, yes.
Okay.
Uh, yeah. They, they left it the way it is. But it was defined as not impacting the zoning. I think zoning board is defined by the UDC, by orders like this.
Okay, so that was just a cleanup.
Yeah.
It worked.
Good. Good. Yep. Mm-hmm. That's what, uh, we gotta do before.
Yeah.
Here we go.
Hey, it worked.
Thirty-five seconds to go.
By the atomic clock.
By the atomic clock. It's six o'clock here on January the 30th. Welcome to the City of Elraca Planning Commission reading. First is the call to order. First up, we are going to have, um, a swearing-in of our new board members and a re-swearing of an existing board member. So there'll be a lot of swearing. So if, uh, Mayor Jeff Reese would come up and do the honors.
There he is.
We, we have Willie. Full house.
Yeah, I would like to come down front. I'll go ahead and enter the office. Willie, do you know who I am? I'm Mayor Jeff Reese. Glad to be here tonight. But it's a turn out. This is great. We have a work session. The council does on Thursday at 3:00. And then our council meeting is next Tuesday at 6:00. We'll start about 3:00. Come back for that. But it's my honor to know all these, these folks here. Each of them has been a bit longer than a few more years than others, but, uh, they will all do a tremendous job for us here in the city. And the job that they do is extremely important to the city. Everything that controls our destiny in the city, zoning issues for the future, how parts of our city are developed, comes before this plan, before it comes from the mayor and council. So it's very important what these ladies and gentlemen do here. And I commend all of y'all for your commitment and for the existing, for, for everybody else that's on this council, Willie, for doing a great job for the city. Very blessed to have the first of this person. So if you all will repeat after me, raise your right hand, or pick up... Well, I'm not gonna do this difference. Raise your right hand. And I'm gonna say aye, and then I'm gonna ask each of you your individual names, and I'm gonna say the pledge, and then if you'll just affirm that again. So I...
Tell the flowers.
Do solemnly affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties as the appointed board, as an appointed board member of the Plating and Zoning Commission. I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to this state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States or other state or any foreign state which I, by the laws of the state of Georgia, prohibit from public. I am otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution and laws of Georgia. I will perform the duties of my office in the best interest of the City of Elraca and in the best of my ability without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof. Do you accept what you was saying?
I will.
Oh, really?
I will.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you. And I'll leave in with Chairman Kraft, and if you could just get them to sign that.
Welcome aboard. There's no pay, but a wonderful 401K. I just wanna say that.
All right. So you say.
So I say. All right. First up is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt this agenda?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I have a, um, comment about the agenda. First item shows minutes. I'm not sure we had minutes for that meeting.
We don't have minutes. Okay, yeah, that's what we're...
So with that modification, I would approve the agenda as presented.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda minus the minutes for 9/14/2017. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. First up is new business, and that will be rezoning.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Louis Lyon, Plating and Zoning Specialist. I'm not sure if we all made each other, but, um, glad to be here. Be interrupting, but so, um, tonight, our first case is application RA-0417.
It sounded like it was. I heard that.
But I was just...
There you go. Not always that karaoke night that messed it up. Okay.
Uh, I was trying to speak loudly. Uh, RA-0417, David Wiley of Dallas, Georgia, requests a rezoning for property located at 1030 Third Street, Villarica, Kansas. Parcel number is 013-010-0013. Land by 190 of the, uh, 190 of the 6th District of Calhoun County. Currently selling 20 single-family residential to LI Limited Industries. His priority consists of 10, 10.81 acres and is located in 4D. Uh, staff recommendation is for approval with permissions.
Thank you very much. Okay, how this works is Willie applicant, uh, or a representative for the applicant, please step forward. Uh, give us your name and address, and tell us why we should reconsider, or consider this rezoning.
Uh, my name is David Wiley. I own the company of Albert Ford Company Incorporated. We're presently located in Dallas, Georgia. Been located in Calhoun County for 20 years. Uh, we originally look at this piece of property, uh, to move our business on and job development in the future for millennial builders, bringing more occupants to have one companies in the city working. And that puts our plan and purpose into being to move our business here and create new opportunities for the business. Now, since we've been doing this, we already have two businesses wanting to participate in a couple lots. But we have to get past this area before we move. Do you think I should make?
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
What do you mean by, uh, additional lots? You had to say you have two other businesses interested. Are you talking about subdividing, uh, this area or what?
Yeah, at some point in time. And there's usually, uh, there's actually a drawing, a plan that I've made out of a proposal.
Last page, John.
Again, this is just a proposal. This is not set in stone, but it's an opportunity for us to move our business on the backside and create a frontside of property for other development. That's the people's side. Do what I do.
On the backside, you mean what would be this lots, lots two and three now shown on that drawing?
Right, it would be lots in the back end, constant for people.
And are those where they've cut down the trees and there're just some stumps back there now?
Sir?
Is that the parcel of land where they've cut down some trees?
No, sir.
And they're just stumps there?
No, sir. That is the property adjacent to this property.
Oh, okay.
Now, what kind of equipment are you talking about bringing in?
Uh, we do all of our, we borrow and road for water, civil lines, storm drains, excavators, bone equipment, all of those, you know, just in steady equipment for construction work.
So no manufacturing involved?
No, no, we don't do... The only time we do any manufacturing is when we do something we need for our personal work.
Is there any building required, uh, construction that you would need?
Not to start off with, because we've been on a lot for 20 years without building. I've got a barn that we do. We do very little bit of time on our lot anyway. This is not a place that we're gonna occupy, running equipment on, you know, eight hours a day or 10 hours a day. Usually in the summertime, we just go in, unload equipment from one job and load it up, move it to another job. You know, so, anything's subject to change, but based on the history of our company, the only time we spend much time on the lot is like in January and February. That's just getting equipped, ready, working on stuff that needs to be worked on.
I was about to say, you probably wash it and maintain it, uh, and stuff?
We do.
Right there on the lot?
We wash it.
Okay. But no...
Pressure wash.
Okay, yeah, okay. All right, that's fine.
What about traffic? How much traffic do you have coming in and out?
Uh, we wouldn't have a lot of traffic, because I mean, there's days and there's weeks that we go, we don't, we don't never move a truck in our yard. There's days that we go that, you know, we're in and out all day. So it's kinda hard to balance that out. A lot of times when we just set up on jobs, we'll go sit... I've got, I love boys setting up in my jungle on job right now. They'll be sitting there for four months moving equipment. And they don't even come back to the yard for that particular job.
Any other questions?
Um... I had something. Are you comfortable with the restrictions, the conditions that staff has recommended?
Uh, I just, honestly, I just got this. This is the first time I've been able to read this. I would prefer to answer that question after I've reviewed this really good.
So you just, just received it now?
Yeah, I just received this. Now, did you know this? Okay, that's my fault. I apologize.
Oh, okay, okay.
I was trying to get him...
Okay.
I'm not a computer whiz, not...
All right.
I didn't play the picture too.
Okay.
This is the first time I've been able to play. They did their job, don't think that...
Oh, yeah. Well, we can't, we're volunteers, so...
Well, if, if, if we approve it, subject to these staff recommendations, then if you're not gonna follow them, you're probably gonna, what's the course there? Mr. Chairman?
I'm often, I'm wondering if, um... If we wanna table this till next month. I mean, that's an option.
I, I certainly don't feel comfortable voting for it, because I would wanna see these restrictions imposed, including access into and out of, from Sabre as opposed to coming in off of Third Avenue.
The access in and out will be off the main highway.
Right.
It won't be through the subdivision.
Well, but that's part of the restrictions.
Because here's, um...
That part, that part, I know I gotta do, because I can't even get a crack at the subdivision.
Because here's like a whole page of, uh, conditions.
Right.
It's not like a couple, and, uh...
You know, I'm okay with the buffer. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I'm okay with the, with the fact that we gotta come in and out, uh, from the cul-de-sac that they've shown on the call.
Okay. Well, what we can do, instead of tabling, if you want, um, you can read through this, and then I'll, we can call other people. And then, if you have anything based on, because it's the, it's the one page. If you have anything, you can come back up if there's any objections or something like that, just, just so that we can save time and not bring it all back up.
About answering the questions.
Okay. That's fine.
Sure.
All right, let's do that. All right, thank you much. All right, at this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this proposal? All right, no takers. Now we open up the floor to anyone who, uh, I'm gonna say either is opposed or has questions for this proposal. Then just step forward, give us your name and address, and have at it.
My name's Dave Throin. Uh, I own Sabre Diamond Tools. It's Sabre Parkway name. Been there for 28 years as a business center in Elraca. I applaud, Mr. Wiley, I'm, I'm a pro-business. I, I understand all this. My objection to this is the traffic. That stretch, and we're talking about now taking Sabre Parkway and extending it to trucks or whatever drilling equipment, plus it looks like that lot is being divided up into five other properties. I don't know what other traffic is gonna be better for that, that property. And I will say, that stretch of 101 from Elraca Trax to the infamous stop sign that exits the Coolville and 101, that is, at best, uh, inconvenient and at worst very convenient. There's been a lot of accidents. You have many semis pulling out of the industrial park and turning in. You have Flowers Bakery, semis in and out, plus all their employees. You have Goldust Park, that's on the west. On the east, you have, you have an auction house once a month, has 100 cars going in and out of there. You have several businesses. I've got 30 employees trying to go in and out every day. It's a two lane, at that, at the bottom of Sabre Parkway, it's two lanes with a turning lane. So my employees have to cross three lanes of traffic, depending on what's going on. It is, it is, in my mind, unless something is addressed with the traffic, I think what you're introducing here is at least truck traffic. And, and I don't know what else in these other subdivision blocks. So I think something needs to be done about the infrastructure. If this extra traffic is gonna be... Your answer already is that you should be situated.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to step up? Any questions? Okay. All right, um, I guess at this point, I'm gonna close the objection part with, did you wanna address, I'm sorry, did you wanna address any issues or did you have any concerns about anything that you've read as far as conditions? Your, your conditions on the contract? The traffic is gonna be a city issue type thing?
No, no, I don't see anything to object to.
Okay. All right.
I'm gonna agree.
Okay. All right.
Question about those other two lots. The gentleman just commented that he didn't know, and I don't know that you know, what will be the purpose of those other two lots? What kind of traffic might they generate?
I'm sorry?
Because there's some divided up.
Two lots that you were talking about? You had other...
You're asking me what kind of business it would be?
Yeah.
Well, one guy's asking for storage, just storage, building. And, uh, I mean, and I'm just saying this through, here's a, through the real estate agent. I haven't talked to anybody. He just said there's an opportunity to support businesses in here, have generate more jobs for the town.
And which of these acres are you gonna take up? The three and the two on the back end, the acres?
I thought, I don't hear you.
Oh, that's fine. The, um, which, which parcel, which part of this subdivided parcel are you gonna be taking? Is it the ones on the backside? It's got like three acres and 2.4 acres or...
Yeah, that's what, I'm gonna put my equipment on the backside.
On the back?
It's far away from view of everything else.
And the smaller parcels, like the 1.25, 1. something, and a 1, uh, God, 1.8? For somebody else? Okay. All right.
But we're considering zoning for all of it?
All of it, right. For limited industrial.
See, I, I, he don't wanna say it. I originally had a, a plan, uh, sketch that y'all may have, that's what I wanted to do. Show just cleared and stored in the back. And it just has some hand-drawn, uh, driveway through here for my trucks.
Okay.
And each other, house being removed.
Is that this?
Yes.
And that was what we originally was wanting to propose, and then I was asked to do something a little more efficient.
Okay.
So you have no problems with this, uh, building, this access road from this little cul-de-sac on, at the end of Sabre into your property?
Do I have a problem with it?
Yeah.
No, sir, I'm not, I'm not sure I follow the question. Do I have a problem?
You, you will be required to build this extension? From, here's, here's the end of Sabre.
Right.
So you're gonna be in charge of building that road?
Yes.
Onto the property? I mean, it'll be extending Sabre Parkway. Okay.
The only thing that I ask, that, that I would ask the council to consider is to allow me to take that paved road into the property? And from there on, do a gravel temporary driveway for my equipment, and that's how the thing gets developed, paving out as it goes, but get the pavement all the way into the property. That's, that's, that's what I'm asking for.
So you will not provide?
Paved.
No, 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 I'm going to.
Gravel first, is that what you're saying? Right.
See, that drawing could change, because they just asked me to come up with some kind of preliminary idea. This is an idea, this is not the whole plan. The plan was, one idea by hand, was, that was all I had planned until I was asked to do this job.
Okay.
And what I'm asking is, is I understand I need to pave from the cul-de-sac into my property.
Correct.
But as that thing gets developed, I've gotta dedicate this road to y'all.
Right.
Let me build it as I go.
Gotcha.
That's all I'm asking for.
A lot of people do that sort of thing, just, of course, I'm sure you are aware, you will have code requirements you need to meet in terms of not tracking, uh, you know, dirt clods and gravel things out onto the paved roads and this sort of stuff, but I would, I'm fine with him just having gravel driveway up there on his property.
My road, my, my storage yard will be covered with gravel.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll have gravel all the way to, uh, and that's, and it's stabilized the road.
Do you have dump trucks? Do you have dump trucks?
No, sir.
Okay. I was gonna say, that would be easy to, to keep it gravel in it, but...
We have trucks in the way.
Sure.
7,500,000 pounds, which is pretty heavy.
Sure. Blue boys?
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
We have blue boys and black guys.
Any other questions?
Well, on, I'm sorry.
Sure.
On here, your first stipulation under A with conditions is that all parking areas shall be paved, curved, and guttered with proper drainage. So you're saying you're not gonna do that to begin with?
May I apologize?
I'm, I'm sorry. And I've got my voice all raspy. I'm sorry. Under your approval for conditions, under A, it's number 4A, it says that parking area and paved must be paved. So are you gonna, everywhere you're parking, everything's gonna be paved and drainage and gutters? All parking areas shall be paved, curved, and guttered with proper drainage. Driveways, loading areas shall be paved. That's gonna be paved on your...
Right. And that is, I asked this...
But where you're utilizing, your, where you're putting your equipment? Where you're parking your stuff?
No, there won't be curbing gutters where I put my equipment at, at the time. There'll be sufficient erosion control, you know, to keep the city happy.
Right. Well, I mean, that's part of the stipulations in order to, that's part of the stipulations in order to be approved, is that on here with the conditions, is that your parking areas are paved and that you have?
Well, but the development goes on...
No, I understand that. I'm just talking about what part you're utilizing for your stuff right now. Your part.
Okay. From my part?
Mm-hmm.
That, that was, that would've been a part of the request that I asked y'all to consider me doing paving into the property, and then the gravel there from here on out to where I put my equipment.
And I, I understand that completely, except that the staff has recommended that not happen, is, is, I guess. And I don't think it's the driveway so much, but it does. It says driveway and loading areas shall be paved. That's the staff, not us, so...
And what we could do is, Willie, when you're done, we could ask staff some questions about that, and, uh, just to clarify that, too.
Because I think the council, um, to my understanding, might be hesitant if we don't follow...
Right.
...the staff recommendations. So that's, it's not us that would be the, necessarily the holdup, but the council would probably have an issue with that, is...
Yep.
It's just for your knowledge, that you know that, because that's under stipulations.
Mr. Wiley?
The whole purpose of this, this is, is to start to, to begin the process of us being able to store our equipment.
Yes.
And as we go along in development, then, then these other things, I totally understand have to be added over here.
Right.
Some of this, this stuff that really needs to be, has to develop. And that's how I'm asking the city to consider this.
Okay.
Because not only am I wanting to bring my business here, as I, I currently, I'm paying taxes in Calhoun County, I'd like to make a change.
Correct. And, and we would love to have, you know, you here, but we just gotta make sure that we do what's right for the infrastructure.
I was gonna say, the, uh, in my mind, are you familiar with that, uh, storage yard they used for a little while down there on the south side of I-20, next to the truck stop?
South side of I-20. Are you talking about where they used to have equipment options?
Well, some of it, yeah, but they, while they were working on the pipeline, they used, they used it for storage of materials and equipment and stuff. And so I'm kinda thinking it's gonna be somewhat similar to that in the back area where you're storing your equipment.
It will be, it'll be a lot smaller.
Right.
A lot smaller, a much smaller space.
Okay. And then, before you continue to expand it for other use, you'll have to come in and comply, or shoot, how to get building permits and development permits to do that, which these same things I'm certain will be in there. And so you'll have to pave and curb and gutter and do those things. Okay.
And not to have that mistaken, that would be, that's just part of the process.
Well, that's acceptable to me.
Plus, in the letter that, um, it's on toward the back, right in front of the, uh, the plat, in a letter to the city, uh, you had... the plat, in a letter to the city, uh, you had put in there, new road to be cleared for purpose of driveway, to access road to be filled with crush and run gravel.
Yeah.
So it's on there, so... I don't know if that, uh, matches up with the condition. That needs to be, because that's what he had stated here. We just, we'll just, we'll talk to staff right now, so, okay. All right. Yes.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. At this point, um, the floor is closed to public comment. Questions for staff? Mike, I'll start off with, with that question. Okay, in, in his letter, and then he just stated that new road to be cleared for the purpose of a driveway, road to be filled with crush and run gravel, and then, but this really just says parking areas. All parking areas shall be paved, curved.
It also says...
Guttered, driveways and loading areas, so...
Um, and that, that number four under the conditions is a purpose of development code, so, you know, really to make it clear where that we do things that have to be done.
Okay.
The parking and parking area, that is part of section 4.03G. So wherever the acres and acres, vehicles coming in, it's got to be parked, it's got to be paved. And, but as far as the storage area, the code also says, heavy equipment storage areas for non-agricultural commercial uses in industrial districts may be surfaced and maintained with a chip and seal or a similar giveable does the surface. However, all driveways leading to such areas shall be paved as required. Um, so for laying down the heavy equipment, it doesn't have to be paved, it just has to be this, your, your surface chip and seal, um, or something, you know?
Equivalent.
Something that's recognized by the development area.
Okay.
Um, but every else, everywhere else for each drive, it, you know, it's...
Needs to be paved.
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. All right. All right. Okay, thank you. All right. So, all right, uh, do you have a motion?
I move to vote or approve.
To approve?
Yeah.
Okay.
One second. You need a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this rezoning?
Now, does that mean with these conditions?
With the conditions?
With the conditions, right.
That are on here. Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve this with the conditions as stated by staff at, uh, City of Villarica? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries 5-0, as approved. Next up is staff comments by Lanice Lyons.
I don't know again, um, I do not have much, uh, I've only been here three months, uh, but, uh, it's my complete plan and zoning, as you all may be aware, we're a, we're a comprehensive plan update. Our contractors have selected, they've already begun working. Um, telling Mr. Hannibay, I've seen that the steering, we had a steering committee meeting a few weeks ago, um, you know, the, uh, the, uh, survey is online, um, we asked that everyone get a, get a chance to take it, encourage your friends to take it. Um, we presented, uh, a version of the survey, a paper version to our department heads for them to send it out to our, uh, city employees and have them pass it on to their colleagues, friends and family. To date, we have, uh, over 350 responses, so things will, we will keep you all up to date on, you know, other need bases that come along, anticipated workshops, open houses, things like that, as well as most of the other things. Um, we're looking at a deadline of having it completed by October.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And any, oh, any update from the city council meeting, I mean, you can do it or that you know of?
Um... Exit council meeting.
It was a comp plan?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I've got, I've got a handout that I want to give y'all. And pardon my, uh, my bass voice, I can sing. I can't sing.
There you go. We're singing like Stevie Nicks. She's kind of gravelly.
Thank you, sir.
He doesn't look like Stevie.
I'm not going to tell you, it's going to be intense at the end of this.
Ah, yes.
Um, what I've just handed to you is, we've got the, the manual that guides us in, um, the development process, order specifications, sewer specifications, roadway specifications, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is a 2004 vintage that we have that's most severely outdated. And since I've been here, I've been working on this. This is a, this is a draft of the redo of this.
This that we have in our hand?
Yes.
Is a proposed draft?
It's a proposed draft, yes.
To take the place of that?
Yes. Um, what I would ask you is to take, take a little time, you, you're not going to scale up the zoning in this book. The closest thing to zoning is probably going to be in, in section 200 that goes through the plating process, et cetera, et cetera. Everything else is, uh, pretty much tied to nuts and bolts of development. And what I'd like to do is I'd like you to take a month to go through it, get any questions, mark it up, call me, email me, whatever. But I'd like for us to try to be able to get y'all to approve this thing, to move it following the council at our next P&amp;D meeting. And just so you know what's coming, my plan is to make the UDC go away. Need to go back to that book that you've got there and a zoning code with a map. The UDC that we have is, is so convoluted, you can't find anything, and it's just been, it's been added to hodgepodge over the years. And I don't believe, I'm not a zoning specialist, but I've been here for 40 years, I don't think the, uh, development standards and the zoning book need to be married together. It's just, it's just too hard to find everything. So that's what you've got is the first step. The zoning code will come next. But, you know, that, if I need typos, please, please let me know, because I'm going through this thing about 15 times already, there's always something. So, uh, but anyway, that's, that's what that is. We're hoping that, that our planning commission meeting, I apologize for missing minutes. Uh, I don't want to say it like anybody else I wasn't here, but that will never have been an apology, if I hadn't known to take them myself when we need them. So, you know, with that being said, that's all I have from a staff perspective. At least do you have anything?
Well, and, and folks that don't know me, Bobby Elliott is my name, I'm the building director and office of several years, hired October 30th, so, I haven't been here very long, but, uh, I've been in the business a long time, so, you know, I'm very hollow. I hope our business starts in there, you know? Bobby? What? This is my first night on the, I've just joined it. But I am not a certified planner or any of that stuff, but I've only been around it for about 45 years as a thinker and lender on all these projects. So this is a great, uh, start, a start, great first step and a good start into what you need to do. I agree. And then the, um, planning, no, you said the, uh...
Zoning.
Zoning is the next step with this. Then where, where are we in terms of land use plan? Do we have an existing one that is adequate to our purpose?
We, we have one now, and if we need to update it, that's part of the, that's the, that's all going to be part of it.
And these will kind of dovetail together then with that?
Absolutely, right.
Okay.
Yes. The last update on the compost plan was 2005, so we're a little bit behind, it's supposed to be done in five years. But yes, everything dovetails together, that's the plan. Any other questions?
All right, thank you, Bobby. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this, this is an overwhelming document, extremely critical. And Bobby has asked us to take it, go away for a month, review it, make comments, et cetera. I'm just wondering if maybe we don't need to get together at least once in that time as a group just to discuss anything that we found? Or maybe even to go through together on some of the significant sections and review them here? What, what would be the rest of the commission's thought on that or Bobby's?
Probably here, because of the meeting, sunshine laws, all that stuff, we'd probably just schedule it as part of the next zoning. In other words, we review it prior to. We don't just show up and go, okay, now let's go page one, but kind of review it. I, I'm in agreement with that and make that as part of the next zoning meeting.
And I will make myself available anytime to take time.
Are you saying we couldn't meet as a group?
I don't know. I mean, we're a recommending board, it's not like there's money involved or, I don't know. Yeah, in other words, as a board, I don't know if we...
Is that prohibited?
Is that prohibited? That's my only question. If it's not, that's fine.
I'll have to double check that, but I don't think planning commission, um, wants to restrict it because you can't, you don't get officially...
Right, we're not, we're a recommending board.
I'll find out.
Okay.
But I just think to, to get together to discuss maybe some things that we found in reviewing it.
If it's okay, you know, legal wise, it's fine.
What I will do in the morning, I'll give that answer.
Okay.
And I will send an email to us, to each of y'all.
Perfect.
And, and, and whatever, like I said, my office, whatever we need to do to help, we're here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Next up, public comment. Uh, if anybody would like to speak, please sign the sign-in sheet with your name and address. All public comments are limited to 10 minutes. Any takers?
Our audience has disappeared.
Yes.
Oh.
We scared them away. This is our typical audience, right? Applicant and nobody else. All right, let's, no takers, uh, make a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, we have a, a motion for adjournment. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn, all those in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.
Wow, I didn't think we'd do it.
Thank you.
40 minutes.
We're good enough, though.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, do you live down there with me in, um, Stillwater?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's right, you look familiar.
Yes.
Welcome to the Stillwater zoning.
Yes, I do.
Yes.
We live right there by Berry and, um, where Mike and Tina used to live.
Yeah.